Good evening and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is a jobs development authority meeting for Monday, September 20th. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler. Weber.
Here.
Mock. Here. Kavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
And you're allowed to do other things that firms or.
And.
Sure.
Not you can't.
We're not.
Thank you. Item two, JDA action items, 2.1 sale of Corporate Center 2, 402 Demers.
All right, I guess this is my cue for Mr. Gosted. Should we ask, Mr. Bean, can you mute your microphone, please?
All right, if you don't mind, I'll give just some background. As you know, the JDA directed that the Corporate Center 2 be placed up for sale through a bidding process. That was accomplished. We ended up hiring Red River Land Company to assist in the sales process. They had a number of advertisements in not only the Grand Forks Herald but the Fargo Forum, which was exceeded what was statutorily required for publication. They also sent out a number of sales packets and targeted a number of folks with emails and 90 brochures that were sent out. That's described in their staff report. Written bids were opened on September 8th, 2021. It ranged from a low of $598,000 to a high of $2,505,000 for the written bids that came in. The process was that we would select the top five bids, but because the fifth spot was a tie, there were actually six parties that were invited for the oral bidding process that occurred on September 10th, 2021. Only three parties ended up showing up for that bidding, oral bidding process. And as part of that process, if you passed on the oral bidding, then you're out. You couldn't bid any further. The first two bidders passed, which meant that Grimsley Consulting LLC, which submitted the written bid of $2,505,000, became the highest bid. Part of the packet that was submitted to the JDA included a purchase agreement. That purchase agreement was drafted in advance of the bidding process so that those that were anticipating to bid could review that document beforehand. And I do apologize for maybe some of the complexity of it, but the purchase agreement has three separate exhibits to the main agreement itself. And I'll talk a little bit about those in a bit. We're selling the property subject to all existing agreements that are recorded against Corporate Center 2. For example, there is a Skyway easement that was recorded back in 1987 for the Skyway across South Forest Street, or excuse me, North Forest Street. There are also agreements with respect to, that were recorded that are in favor of the various tenants in Corporate 1. The reason they recorded those is because they have options to buy their space in Corporate 1, but because the heating system that heats both Corporate 1 and Corporate 2 is located within the Corporate 2 center, there is the ability that if they exercise their option, that part of the Corporate 2 would then, there'd be some rights for those tenants if they exercise that option to continue to use that heating system. They also under that agreement have a right of first refusal with respect to Corporate 2, except that it doesn't apply unless it's for part of a floor in Corporate 2. We're selling all of the floors, not just any parts, so that right of first refusal wouldn't apply. And then with respect to leases that exist, the buyer will be assuming those going forward. Back to the exhibits to the purchase agreement, because of the shared heating system, I created a heating access and maintenance agreement that will be executed between the JDA and the buyer. That'll be signed at the time of closing. Essentially, what it does is it calls for the JDA, who will be the owner of Corporate 1, to maintain that heating system, but giving both parties access to it. And the costs and expenses for that heating maintenance and the cost for operating the heating system will be shared based upon the square footage of the two buildings. Corporate 1 is about 67% of the total square footage, so the JDA will pay 67% of that cost. And then the Corporate 2 will pick up the remaining 33%, give or take a few percentage points there. There's also, because the parking ramp is next door and we have to clean the snow off periodically, we have to get a snow easement for just a small part to dump snow over the ledge on the third floor. We then move the snow out, but we need an easement for that, so that'll also be executed at the time of closing. That's Exhibit B to the main agreement. And some of those agreements, like the heating agreement, have themselves their own exhibits. Like, for example, the heating access agreement has an exhibit that depicts where the common boiler system is located, and I think it's on the second floor of Corporate 2. The final exhibit is a Skyway access and maintenance agreement for the Skyway that goes across Demers Avenue. It's similar to the heating access agreement where the JDA will maintain that Skyway system. And it's important to do so because the pipes for the heating system are actually located within the Skyway itself, leading to, between Corporate 1 and Corporate 2. And the costs and expenses for that maintenance will be shared in a similar fashion based upon the square footage of the two buildings. So the JDA will pick up about 2/3 of the expense, and the new buyer of Corporate 2 will pick up 1/3 of that, or approximately 33% of that cost. I drafted it in a manner that those, the heating access agreement and the Skyway agreement and the maintenance will be conducted by the JDA because we have certain obligations to our tenants over in Corporate 1, and I wanted to assure ourselves that we were in charge of that maintenance, not a private party that could cause us some problems with our tenants. One of the things to be mindful of is that neither the heating system or none of these agreements that are going to be signed, it specifically states that it doesn't alter, amend, enlarge, or reduce any of the obligations of those existing agreements. The purchase agreement, other than the complexity because of the common heating system in the Skyway and the snow balance of the agreement is pretty straightforward, we did receive a $250,000 earnest money check, and the money is sitting with Red River Land Company. One thing I do want to mention is that, and I said this at the Growth Fund Committee as well, is that I don't think without us engaging Red River Land Company, we would, this would have not have gone as smoothly as it did. So I certainly want to thank Chris Greven and John Bosford for all the work that they did. I know they brought through a lot of people to look at the facility and spend a lot of time getting their arms around it and marketing the property. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Sandy.
Where do we pay Red River Land Company for that? I didn't see it anywhere in the document.
Yep. It's, the maximum is $45,000, or 1.5% of the purchase price. So it should be about, I've calculated about $37,575.
That's great. I appreciate all the hard work from not only Red River Land Company, but certainly you and your team, Mr. Gosted. I will move approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, information items, 3.1, update on Block 5 LLC.
JDA, excuse me, JDA President Mock, we just wanted to give you a heads up that we previously gave it to the Growth Fund Committee, that Mr. Gosted and city administration's working on the next development agreement for the Block 5, or Block B, otherwise known as the St. John's Building renovation. So that's the next one you're going to see, and just because it's going to come up relatively quickly, we're going to bring it back to the October 4th Growth Fund Committee and also October 4th JDA, and then it would be, there would be a public hearing on October 11th for a final approval of the development agreement. And as you recall, in this case, we didn't move forward with Block B as a revenue bond, but we approved it as a growth fund loan. And we approved it as an up to 20-year loan with a suggested rate of 2%. And so that's what will be incorporated into the development agreement as we move forward on October 4th, and then finally on October 11th. So we just want to give you a heads up that this is starting to move through, and obviously this is the second of four that we approved on February 1st, and we're going to plan to bring this through. Just want to give you a heads up, so if there's any questions in advance between now and October 4th, Dan Gosted, myself, and the city team will be available for any questions, and we'll finalize things as we lead up to October 4th. So that's what we have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
One last thing. Importantly, what the urgency of this one is, Mr. Coontz and his team are ready to move forward with, most importantly, with construction yet this fall. So we prioritize this as the second one. I would anticipate the Lyons Development Agreement coming this fall yet, and as probably the third one. The last one, as you recall, is Memorial Village. UND has not moved forward with that development agreement through the Board of Higher Ed, and so that would probably be the fourth one that we'll bring through. But I would anticipate getting this one moved through, coming back with Lyons, and then finally Memorial Village.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned.
Welcome, everybody. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, September 20th, 2021. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler. Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Kavami. Sandy.
Here.
And Bean. We have a corps.
I think we had six out of seven there, did we? Okay. 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. I do have a few announcements today. First, I just wanted to start with just thanking the city staff. We had a lot of work that was, had gone into this last weekend, over the past few weeks, and different cross-departments have been working together and getting things done. It kind of started with the busing a few weeks ago, but we've seen that throughout the city and a lot of other areas. Obviously, a lot of great events with the Luke Combs record-setting weekend, and then UND. Some might have not called it the best win, but they did win 38-0, so that was good to see. So congratulations to both the Alara Center and the UND football team. And it wouldn't have been possible at the city of Grand Forks to make that turnover. I believe we had somewhere 20 city employees that helped with that changeover, helped with parking. So the Alara Center, which is run by Spectre, has their own staff, but at this time, when we got a crunch in workforce, we had city staff from Public Works and other departments that flipped over to the Alara Center and then put on that hat for the weekend and worked those events. I want to thank the firefighting department. We had 17 firefighters that went over there at 4:30 in the morning. The Luke Combs tour wanted to get rapid testing done that day, and from 4:30 to about 10 o'clock, they got 107 tests done, and fortunately, 107 negatives. So that worked out well. And I want to thank Public Health, too. They stepped up in a real short crunch, got the tests, got the state approval, and delivered those tests in PPE to the fire department. If you want to see something pretty cool, go to the Alara Center's Facebook page. They got their turnover, probably had about 23,000 views already, but in about nine hours, they took that entire Luke Home set down and those thousands of chairs and got it ready for football. So that was pretty cool to see. And also want to thank our police department with all the events going on. They were at a whole number of them to keep everybody safe. Let's see here, and then the bus department, of course. That was a big deal, and we'll continue to do that. We are short-staffed. Hopefully, we can continue to find a path forward to get those kids to school. Last week, we're at the North Dakota League of Cities, so I want to thank Councilmember Weber for also being there. We had a pretty good showing. We had some good presentations by City Attorney Gosted, by Ms. Thorsted as well, and Todd got to rub elbows with all the other city administrators. So if I had to pick one in the state, I think we got the right one here. Same goes for everybody else. On our Public Safety Peace App, I wanted to give just a moment to recognize the award they received from the Dakota 911 Conference in Fargo. They received recognition as making a difference in recognition of their dedication to public safety for officer line of duty death on May 27, 2020. So our 911 dispatchers are a critical piece, obviously, of our first responders, both fire, police, and EMS, and they got a really tough job to do, and they've been doing it well. So I want to take a moment to recognize them. Lastly, I got to talk with him this morning, Blake Beckstad out from Public Works. This is his last day after 43 years, so I don't make you see him tonight, but anyone that puts in 43 years, why don't we give him a round of applause for that? Thanks, Beck. Well, let's see here. We had a couple more things. We had the Air Force Ball this weekend, so on top of everything else going on at the Potato Bowl, my wife, Jenny and I, Spencer Halverson, as well as Todd Feeling, were out at the Air Force Ball. I was fortunate enough to get to sit next to four-star General David Alvin, who's the Vice Chief of Staff of the Air Force, who's the second in charge of the Air Force. What he impressed on me is that there's a reason that we're getting the Chief of Staff. We're getting all these generals and commanders that are coming to Grand Forks, and there's a reason for that. There's big things coming. They want the community to be proud of that and to be excited. "We're not going to know everything that's here," he said, "but just be excited to know that we're, that it's here." So pretty exciting. And then, I suppose Jeannie got to see this quite a bit, but Phase 2 of the construction at the skate park was completed. That was around $200,000 of CDBG funding went to that, another strategic investment. I think we've got some pictures of that. There's, that's Jeannie right there doing a kickflip. Yeah, that all looks like it hurts, whether you landed or not. Looks like it hurts the next day. And actually, lastly, I just wanted to bring something up that's a little bit under the radar, but definitely a very positive economic indicator for the future and for the city of Grand Forks, and that was the Ultra Bond Sale. I believe it was last week or the week before, but 73 different agencies bid, and they bid a total of $3.7 billion for $383 million bond issuance, meaning it was oversubscribed by 9.9 times, which when you have bidding like that, it drives the interest rate down. They were expecting a rate of 3.18%, it went down to 2.79%, and this is all outside investment coming into our city and coming at a very low rate. They only do that when they believe there's a future in the, both in the hospital and in the community. And with that, Ultra received an improvement in their credit rating, so they were a BAA2 with a stable outlook, now they're a BAA2 with a positive outlook. And on top of all the other financing savings, this, just this oversubscribing of the bond issuance is going to save another $6 million over the term of the bond. So really exciting for the community, and we're all hoping to see that hospital get up in a hurry. With that, let's see, let's move on. Where did I put my agenda? All right, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. I see former Sheriff Ross out there, so Marine, if you want to call it, then we'll get Bob up here.
2.1, Law Enforcement Memorial Update.
Sheriff Ross, the stage is yours.
Yeah, people still do call me that, I guess. Mayor Botczynski, members of the city council, thanks for having me here. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the Northern Valley Law Enforcement Memorial, which Danny Weigel is also on the committee, but we didn't want to come before the city council, before we had 100% of our money raised, and we did get that goal. It was amazing, the support we had, not only from the city, the county. Red River Valley Motorcycle Group gave us $30,000, and a number of other people did too, the Engelsted Foundation. Anyway, the projected estimate on that was about $250,000. We raised $260,000. And in July of this year, the bids went out for advertising, and we only got one bid, and that bid was ICS, and that came in at $369,200, which actually was $109,200 more than what we had raised. So we did reject that bid, and so right now, what we're going to do is we are going to rebid, hopefully, this fall and winter, when contractors are looking for work for next spring and summer. And hopefully, those bids will come in lower. We are going to do bid to purchase on two items, that being the granite and the statue. That way, you know, we're going to cut down on the cost, and it takes like six months or longer sometimes for that granite and the statue to get to Grand Forks. So hopefully, those bids should be coming out here maybe as early as this week yet. So, let's see. Other than that, I think that's about it. That's pretty much the update. It is going to be in Optimus Park. It will be done, I know that. And I just appreciate all the support the city has given us in getting this project rolling, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any comments, Mr. Weigel or Mr. Kavami?
I'll be brief. Just wanted to say thanks to Bob for all the work that he's put in. While I may sit on the committee and attend some meetings, this is something that Bob's working on probably daily. So my thanks to him and the other committee members and the city, county, everybody for investing in this project to show support to the family and members of law enforcement that have lost their lives. So thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Much appreciated.
2.2, Opioid Update.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few comments before Mr. Doolitz starts. Two weekends ago, pretty plain and simple, we had a bad weekend here in Grand Forks. We had some overdoses. It's horrible, it's terrible to see, but we have been extremely proactive. We've been proactive on the demand side and the treatment side, which Mr. Doolitz and Mr. Schaefer will hit on. We've also been proactive on the supply side, but it becomes really frustrating and extremely difficult to manage when you see what's going on at the southern border, you see 5,400 pounds of fentanyl seized. That's enough to kill 1.2 billion with the B people, 1.2 billion people, and that's one that we actually caught. So, you know, who knows how many more shipments are making it through, so it's extremely frustrating on the supply side, and all the efforts that our police do is phenomenal, but sometimes you feel like you're fighting a losing battle. We've been lower than comparative North Dakota cities when it comes to overdoses, but still, we've got work to do, and that's, to me, that's not good enough. We've got work to do to eliminate the stigma that's around substance abuse, and all that's going to help, and all that awareness is certainly going to help. That's why we've asked for a presentation today, and we've got some good things coming that can help in this fight. So just wanted everyone to be aware of that, and I think it all starts with awareness and goes from there. So, Mr. Doolitz, now you're going to start, and I think Mr. Schaefer had something as well, so please, sir.
Yes, Mayor Botczynski, members of the council, I'm Michael Doolitz, functioning in my opioid response project coordinator capacity. Don't always get to do that, so it's nice to switch it up for once. I'm here to talk about our opioid response efforts at Grand Forks Public Health and go into a little bit of what our next steps for the next grant year are going to be. So starting out with a little bit of a current situation, I really want to thank the Grand Forks Police Department for giving us such a good tip-off on what was happening in the community, because it wasn't necessarily bearing out in some of the numbers that we normally monitor when we look at our opioid overdose and impact measurements. But Grand Forks Police Department had noticed a significant increase in the number of overdoses and overdose fatalities in Grand Forks in 2021. So when you look at the graph, they've had 54 overdoses overall, 38 of those being suspected opioid overdoses, and unfortunately, six of those have been either suspected or confirmed to be fatalities related to opioid use. This is up from an average of roughly three per year over the past five years, and in overall, what had looked like a downward trend in our opioid overdoses even leading into the pandemic. When we compare Grand Forks to our peer communities throughout North Dakota, the impact is lower, but we don't want to minimize that impact either. You know, six fatalities and seeing such an increase in fatalities is cause for concern for us. And so it was good that we could compare, but there is room for action to be taken. One of the things that we've noticed, you know, looking at our trends in opioid overdoses in the community, is that we have actually seen a decrease in opioid overdoses going to the hospital. So while we may have a lot of police-reported overdoses, what we aren't seeing is we aren't seeing them touch the hospital. So a lot of individuals, once they are successfully resuscitated from their overdose, they can return to a normal, you know, mentation status, things like that, normal decision-making pretty quickly, and so they reserve the right as individuals to refuse transport to the emergency department. So these numbers aren't necessarily bearing out in emergency department numbers. It's happening from the police department, the fire department, and ambulance, and not necessarily making it to the emergency department. That is the good and the bad of law enforcement carrying naloxone, law enforcement, fire department, ambulance carrying naloxone, is people, you know, return to a normal state very quickly, which is a good thing because you are saving their lives, you're reducing that time from overdose to reversal, which undoubtedly has saved many lives in the community. It just reduces the number of people that are going to the emergency department. The emergency department is not necessarily a place for someone to experience a lot of change related to substance use. Usually, that's kind of a cumulative thing. The resources aren't necessarily there in the emergency department, so it's not necessarily a bad thing that people aren't making it there, but it is a changing, change in the trends that we are seeing in the community. So Grand Forks Public Health, our opioid response efforts have been in earnest since 2017, when it received the Opioid State Targeted Response Grant. We received that grant for two years. Now we're on to a different grant from the federal government passed through the state. It's called the State Opioid Response Grant, and this will be, we'll be going into, I think, what is technically year four on that grant. There was some crossover between the two grants. So Grand Forks Public Health, through the State Opioid Response Grant, funds my position and funds our efforts. Our efforts fall on the wheel of behavioral health change. They fall from selective prevention down to aftercare and recovery. We also have the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition that receives separate, both federal and state, funding that focuses on the promotion and universal prevention. So, you know, doing things like outreach to kids, preventing individuals through outreach, intentional education, things like that. So we kick in kind of at that selective prevention for people who are at risk, all the way down to recovery support. So that's how I'm going to kind of break it apart, and I'm going to try and touch on all of the actions in the orange and how, what we do fits into that. So starting with selective prevention. Selective prevention is preventing individuals who would be at risk from progressing into like an addiction-type stage, or people who are using to accidentally overdose, using opioids for, you know, even prescription reasons, things like that, to prevent them from accidentally overdosing. So the Grand Forks Public Health-supported activities include 1RX. That is a, that's an initiative of NDSU School of Pharmacy, where they do preventive screenings for individuals when they receive an opioid prescription, and then take action based off of that screening. And then we also operate public access naloxone, including naloxone availability for free through, through a few pharmacies in Grand Forks, as well as naloxone locations available throughout the community. We also have other activities going on, such as the Ultra Opioid Stewardship Committee and medication take-back programs through, like law enforcement, they have locations for medication take-back and pharmacies. Moving on to indicated prevention. So indicated prevention is for, to prevent further progression of an individual's substance use, or prevent, or prevent further harm related to that substance use or that activity. So. So the way we do that is through a few different programs. First, we operate the APC Project Syringe Service Program, which I'll touch on on the next slide. We also have the social work program expansion that we've helped fund at Spectre Health, where we specifically make social workers available to individuals either at risk for overdose for any reason or who are part of the, are part of the syringe service program. Social workers have turned out to be a very good first contact point for getting people connected to services. So I can usually get a social worker to come down pretty quickly to come visit with a client, to get them, you know, working within the, the available treatment infrastructure that they, that they represent. Spectre Health has been a great partner for that. And then we've also started to use syringe collection program. This has been kind of a side activity. We realized that there was no readily accessible location for people to take, use syringes and dispose of them properly. We want fewer syringes available in the community because we want to reduce the chance of disease spread. And so we did add a, use syringe collection site at Spectre Health, both one indoors and outdoors. And then on the other activities here, Grand Forks Public Schools did receive a grant about three, four years ago where they have added an addiction counselor on staff. So that's one example of many. The APC Project Syringe Service Program, so I was originally before, before council in August of 2019 to discuss the APC project, received approval in September of 2019. We opened in October. I haven't had much of an opportunity to provide an update, but here's where we are at. So after the pandemic, we realized Spectre Health was kind of our, our most common referral source for clients. They had a lot of the programming that we wanted people to have. They also had the space that we, that we thought made sense. And so they offered the space to us in their building for us to operate the syringe service program. So we are now operated out of the Spectre Health building. We operate there right now, ten hours per week and use, just short of a full FTE. And that includes a lot of administrative work and things like that. We've had ninety clients since we started the program. At any given time, we're working with roughly fifteen clients. So it's not like we have a large number of individuals that we're serving at any given time, but you know, between fifteen and thirty clients per month are, who's active. And we've seen thirty new ones in a year. That gives us an indication that a lot of people are progressing either onto a, or progressing onto a higher level of care, even if we aren't necessarily catching them at that particular point in time. We have been very successful at using the Syringe Service Program this year to get naloxone doses out into the community. We've delivered over four hundred and thirty naloxone doses out into the community, which would be about two hundred and fifteen kits. And we got those into the hands of the people who are most able to reverse overdoses and reverse them the quickest, which are the people that are there with those individuals. Methamphetamine remains the most common substance of use with eighty-nine percent of our clients citing that as a substance of use. Opioids are much further down at about forty-three percent. So methamphetamine is still kind of a hidden, a hidden concern in the community with a large amount of methamphetamine use happening. Moving on to case identification, Spectre Health has been, again, our partner for a lot of the programming that we do. They operate a behavioral health program. They make it available for the APC project or for our syringe service program to connect people with. But we also have other activities available in the community, such as Northeast Human Service Center has open access hours. The police department has a community outreach bureau that works really hard to get people engaged in treatment resources and is a good asset to the community. And like I had mentioned, the addiction counseling program at Grand Forks Public Schools. Spectre Health, again, provides our medication assisted treatment in the community. Medication assisted treatment is using medications approved by the FDA to reduce, reduce cravings or reduce the effects of, of illicit drug use to support recovery. And then they combine that with addiction counseling to get people from active use into recovery. Other activities that we have supported include medication, or sorry, include addiction counseling, both through Spectre Health, who's added an addiction counseling program through our, through our grant support, as well as supporting them getting other grants, as well as AGUCI associates who have operated outpatient treatment program at the Grand Forks County Correctional Center up until the pandemic. And then finally, our long-term treatment or recovery support activities include, we've supported peer support in the community through both FACE IT Together, as well as the F5 Project, which I've come before council before to talk about. Both are still operating in the community. They operate relatively small present, relatively small presence in the community right now. But we also have a lot of extra help available through programs run by the state, such as Free Through Recovery, Community Connect, which assign individuals, caseworkers, and care coordinators with private entities to help support people at risk to get connected to services, either through the criminal justice system or, or people otherwise at risk. So the state has been providing a lot of support to help, help promote recovery in the state that has helped both programs, such as F5 Project and FACE IT Together, stay sustainable, as well as bring other actors into the community or other programs into the community. And then finally, aftercare, you know, peer-led meetings are still going on in Grand Forks. We're very happy about that. We have faith-based groups providing, you know, providing ministry to individuals, you know, with addiction and we're very happy about that as well. And we also, you know, support aftercare through all the other entities that we work with. So looking at our next steps, it is really hard to break down four years of, of a lot of hard work into slides, but yeah, we are continuing all of our opioid work and we are looking forward to next year. So this is our request. This isn't necessarily what we will receive, but for the next year, we are continuing to support our peer support in housing. Our linkage to care activities, linkage to care and contingency management activities are both, are both efforts to get people into treatment that those, that will primarily be to Spectre Health. And then we would also be looking at adding a messaging campaign specifically targeted towards concerns related to fentanyl and fentanyl being in substances. Fentanyl is in most substances being sold as opioids. We're seeing that in people thinking that they're taking a regular pharmaceutical opioid and it turns out to be fentanyl and they're overdosing. That has been a driving factor, as cited by the police department. So that is one of the areas where we want to enhance our efforts. And then working with the police department and fire department for a naloxone leave behind program. And then finally, looking, looking, also looking into the future, we're looking to establish an opioid treatment program, which is otherwise known as a methadone program. We've received startup funds and we've engaged with an organization called Community Medical Services, who will be presenting after me. And they will, you know, discuss what they do, what they're bringing to the community. But this has been something that I have been working on since I've started in this position to bring community medical services to the community. You know, they, they operate in Minot and they operate in Fargo and they operate good operations. They are good about bringing people up from within. So Mark's been with Community Medical Services since they started in North Dakota. I've seen a lot of their people grow within the organization and so I am very happy to hear their interest in coming to the community. Before I have Mark talk though, I will open it up to any questions related to my activities. Otherwise, we can hand it over to Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Doolittle. Mr. Weigle?
Just two questions for you, Mr. Doolittle. If I recall correctly, the syringe takeback program, part of that was initiated because of disease, correct? And I, maybe it was hepatitis C, something along those lines?
Correct. The, the three reasons why we started the program was to reduce overdoses, prevent the spread of infectious disease related to substance use and to engage people in treatment.
Do you have any of the statistics to, to show that this program has impacted the spread of disease?
So I haven't received the, the new data yet from the state. Again, the state health department has been pretty tied up with COVID response. One of the challenging parts is to get people to, to engage with, you know, the frequent testing, but we have, we have found new hepatitis C cases. Overall, it's been about between ten and thirty percent of our clients have been found to be hepatitis C positive. We are seeing people coming through the program that we're able to get actually connected to hepatitis C treatment as well. They're, they know that they're positive. Generally, hepatitis C treatment has been really restrictive on people who use drugs because they don't want to spend a lot of money and have someone get reinfected. New data is showing though, if we get people treated, they're actually not that likely to get reinfected if they're engaging in other programming as well. And so we have been able to get some people treated as well. So we have worked in both of those areas to try and address that component.
Perfect. And then in one of the slides, slides, it talks about the service program. It says currently operating ten hours a week with point nine five FTE. What, just for people that might be seeing that at home, what are the other, you know, thirty hours a week looking like or twenty-eight hours a week, since it's not one complete full-time position?
So currently, council member Weigle, currently it's supporting part of my, my position. We try whenever possible to have two people there to staff, just because we're away from our, our normal office. And so whenever possible, we try and have two people to staff at the same time or at least two people available at the same time. And so that's why it looks kind of weird to have only ten hours a week and have that many FTE dedicated to the program. But, you know, our, our, our staff are doing things like, you know, ensuring that we have a good access to supplies. They previously have done sweeps through the community looking for inadequately, or syringe, syringe litter, things like that, which we haven't received a lot of reports from or haven't received a lot of, or haven't found much. But, you know, we do things like that as well when we are filling out our time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Doolittle? Ms. Mock?
By the numbers, it seems like meth is a substantial problem. Is it the risk of overdose that makes the opioid problem so unique?
Council member Mock, that's correct. So we, with methamphetamine use, there's not as many acute effects that happen. It's possible to overdose on methamphetamine, but the results of an overdose generally don't lead to, you know, to death or it's very hard for them to lead to death. That can be more of a long longitudinal thing. The reason why we put so many resources into opioid overdose is because it can cause deaths so quickly that we need to, you know, set up things like programs to get people access to naloxone and things like that, because we can't engage those people. We can't get them, you know, into recovery, get them back to work, get them back to being gainful members of society if they've passed away. And so that's why we focus so much on the naloxone, even though it seems like a short-term Band-Aid, but as part of a long-term strategy.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Doolittle? All right. Thank you.
So I'll switch over to Mark from Community Medical Services. He is the regional vice president. So he serves not only North Dakota, but the upper Midwest as well. So I'll let Mark kick it away.
Thank you, Mayor Botczynski and members of the council. My name is Mark Schaefer with Community Medical Services. I saw that picture myself briefly. Five years I've aged substantially, so it's disturbing to see so quickly. I want to, I'm going to try to keep my time brief so we can get any questions that are there, but I first want to say thank you very much. I work with seven states across the United States. Of course, North Dakota is my home. I still live in Minot, so I'm, I'm sure I'm biased, but it is amazing to be invited in, to be able to have conversations with the council, with the mayor, which is very progressive. So I really appreciate all the efforts that are going in in Grand Forks, so. Thank you. I did want to, just, Community Medical Services, we serve actually nine states across our entire company. I've got a couple of them listed up there. I am the vice president of Northern Territory. We have our regional operations director who serves our north central region in Fargo. Our regulatory specialist is in Minot with myself, our ombuds person. So we do have a lot of leadership within North Dakota, which we appreciate very much, given the scope of where we serve. Our mission is to serve those and the effects of opioid substance disorder. We see it more than just serving the opioid substance use disorder, but also the effects on the community. And so community partners are extremely important to us, reaching out to Fargo, to Minot. I feel we have pretty good relationships there. We've, we've been supported and it's made all the difference in the world to the services that we provide. And so it's, it's exciting to be able to be here and talk to as many folks that are involved with this. As I said, as has been discussed already, I think what brings us here is, one, the forward thinking of the mayor's office, the harm reduction efforts in Grand Forks. As you have an advocate in Michael, he, as he said, I've known him since he started this work and he's been in the leading front in North Dakota. And actually, as I see presentations across the United States, I believe he's leading the front there. We've seen this increase in heroin and fentanyl, which results in the overdoses. There are many good, there's many providers in, in Grand Forks who are operating, offering buprenorphine. I'll briefly talk about the difference and what we would be bringing into that. What I want to make clear is that this is not bringing more of the same. It is a different medication that provides substance, to help with the substances. And methadone specifically, which has a very different regulations for those, is something that would add for those individuals. When you are using heroin and fentanyl, you're developing a tolerance that's much higher. Buprenorphine products that are offered in North Dakota, in Grand Forks have a ceiling effect that sometimes can't get to where that fentanyl will get someone to. And so methadone is one more piece to the puzzle that you have here. And especially for individuals that the, the buprenorphine is just not going to work for them. So it is, it is not serving the same people that are already being served. It's serving individuals that aren't going to be successful right now with the current As I said, so opioid treatment programs, as Michael said, we often call it a methadone clinic. We don't call it that, but that is the easiest way to know what we, what we provide. It's highly regulated by the state, the federal government, by DEA. The difference between a program that we serve, individuals come daily. I, I would be remiss if I didn't share, when we opened up in Minot, we had an individual from Grand Forks who traveled to Minot every single day, three and a half hours, got her medication, five minutes, drove back to Grand Forks and did this until we opened our clinic in Fargo. We currently have several clients who go to Fargo now, every single day, to get their medication, come back home. And so the, the benefit of having a clinic in Grand Forks is that you have individuals who need these services and it helps them get back into work and into the community. It is up to three months before a person does not have to come in every single day. And that's if they have no positive drug screens, that's if they're not missing appointments, if they're coming in for everything, then they get one take home. After another two to three months, they get one more take home. So in six months, they're still coming in five days a week. This is, this is when we say it's highly regulated. It, it is extremely difficult. We see our clients as extremely courageous because they are taking on a huge burden just to engage in treatment. The benefit though, is that they're not in residential sometimes. Some people can be served in a methadone, in an opioid treatment program that don't need residential. This allows them to work. They can come in at six AM in the morning to get their medication, they can do their counseling, and they're able to go to work. The others that we're providing the medical, we have a medical provider who is prescribing the medication. We have nurses who are administering the medication, counselors who are seeing the clients, peer support who are working with them. The, the only benefit, the one benefit that I'll say when we have folks who are coming in every day, is that once that medication is kicking in, we're able to see folks every single day and to provide services. When you stop using heroin, fentanyl, when you stop using opiates, all of a sudden, you have a lot of time that you never had before because you aren't chasing and trying to find things. And filling that time with good activities is the stuff that we then start to work on. So people are starting to get back into work or they're starting to get back with their family, they're starting to be able to maybe go back to school. But they need support to be able to get into those activities. So the counseling is a huge piece of that. Having a partner at a time when North Dakota is very strapped for addiction counselors is huge. Having a partner in Grand Forks with that is, makes a huge difference for us to be able to provide those services. The other thing that just, I've worked in behavioral health for twenty-some years. We opened the first clinic in Minot. It was the first I'd ever heard of methadone, actually, five, six years ago. And it was pretty amazing to see the difference from someone who comes in, who is in active withdrawal, desperate, really at death's door, and within a week or two, to see them actually coming in saying, hi, how are you doing? I'm not going to say that everything's changed in their lives, but the physical effects of the medication for folks and to be able to see them return to that normal. The graph that Michael has included there just kind of shows we're trying to get to normal. We're not, we're not having someone who is high, we're not having someone who's depressed. They just, and that's the nor, the word that they use most often is, I just feel normal. I don't feel high, I don't feel depressed, I just feel like I used to. So currently, the North Dakota Behavioral Health Division supports the establishment. We have an amazing state department, James Knopick, ours, State Opioid Treatment Authority is incredibly helpful. Pam Sagness and their group, they've been supportive across the state. There is funding, as Michael said, from There is funding, as Michael said, from state and federal sources to open this. We also have, we're just committed to bringing this into the, into the community. We have identified a location that's appropriate, that would be good for clients and services. And, and our goal, looking at the issues that are being faced, is immediacy. There is, there's federal applications, there's the DEA, there's inspections. Not all of those are in our control, but our goal would be to try to open in less than 60 days. The directive actually I've been given is 30 for my COO, so, but we don't have all the control, but we are going to push really hard with, to get everything moving quickly so that we can bring the services in and, and add to the services that you've already provided. And with that, I would take any questions if that's appropriate.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Schaefer? Mr. Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're looking to set up shop here?
Correct.
Are you asking us for any support at this time or this is just information only?
I would say information only. Michael will be, can speak to that better. I'm sorry.
You can see how when people come to us and want to bring something nice, they usually ask for something. So that's why we're a little starstruck or shell-shocked by just bringing something to us without needing money. So, thank you.
So Councilmember Weber, we view, you know, any type of programming like this, we want to make sure that we're a good, good, or bring good partners into the community, one, and that the partners get a chance to be in front of the, the community as well. You know, looking back four or five years ago, in, in West Fargo, a program, you know, opioid treatment program was trying to come in, kind of, you know, fly by their seat of the pants, you know, late at night type thing, and it did not go well in the community. You know, Community Medical Services is a completely different program and they have shown a lot of interest in being well-engaged in the community and things like that. So we want, you know, we want everyone's plant, or the plants to be well-known in the community before this program starts. We want to know, or want to let you know that we have been advocating for them, we've been getting federal funds, things like that. So that's why we wanted to bring this before you today.
And I'm a believer in harm reduction strategies and methadone treatment, but it often runs into some opposition. What's happened in other communities when you've come to set up shop?
Yeah, thank you for asking. Yes, we've, we've seen the gamut. We were very fortunate, when, when they first opened in Minot, actually the city put a moratorium for one year. The company lost their lease, they waited for a year, they did education, and it turned out, the city then said, okay, we're ready for this, we got the education. Shortly thereafter Fargo was pretty opening in, in a similar situation where, where the city was in support. It made a huge difference. We didn't see any issues with that. Now, the location, that was the biggest issue that we found. And so working with the different offices, finding a location is usually the biggest thing. As, on, on the opposite end of that, I'm in, I'm in Wisconsin, Milwaukee, Wisconsin almost every week. It's been one year since we, we have one clinic there that's grown to 900 people and we can't get a second clinic open because of the opposition. And they've rezoned and made the rules changed so that we can't get open there. So it, it, it varies drastically. So definitely being community partners, we want to be good neighbors, we want to make sure that people are on board and understand what we're providing and have an opportunity to raise concerns that come up.
And you've touched upon what was going to be my third question, location. Do we?
Yes. The Turning Point is, I have the name right.
Yeah, the Turning Point Building at 32nd.
Located within, within that suite, they're working with Mr. Tanner.
Yeah.
Tanner goes, sorry. And so that's a location that's been vetted and gone through and works, it's a good location for us and it sounds like it's a good location overall.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Schaefer? All right. Well, thank you. Much appreciated for your time. Mr. Duetts, oh, go ahead, Marion.
That's fine. 2.3 is the COVID update.
I suppose you've got some more time for us, Mr. Duetts?
I always have time.
Mayor Bocinski, members of the council, I'm Michael Duetts with Grand Forks Public Health. I tried to shorten this up a little bit as well, but to give you a quick COVID update. Looking at our weekend review, we have had a decrease overall in the number of cases. So first we started out with a leveling of our COVID-19 cases and then we started seeing a decrease over this past weekend in the number of new cases per day. Generally, we do see a little bit of a decrease on the weekend, but since things have kind of leveled out so well, I, I am kind of hopeful that we're going to see, see this stick. Unfortunately, we've also seen a decrease in vaccinations with 367 in the past week compared to that nice little bump that we were seeing with the start of school. Looking at our case rate by age, we had, I've been really concerned by the increases in cases that we've been seeing in the 10 to 19 age group, you know, and secondarily in the zero to nine age group. That does seem to be going down fortunately. We still had 40 cases in the 10 to 19 age group in the past week, so we want to see that improve. But we've also been seeing decreases kind of across the, across the board overall. You know, looking at where we are at compared to last year, we are on an overall decrease, but I think we also need to be cognizant that this may be a temporary decrease and we, you know, we may see an increase later on into the, what would normally be like the flu season or something like that. But this is still, you know, anytime we see our numbers going down is a good sign, but we should just be, you know, we should be understanding of our previous situation. Moving on to hospitalizations, that has been one area where I haven't seen a lot of changes occurring. So we are still roughly on an upward trend looking at our active hospitalizations. Active hospitalizations are important because it gives us an idea of the impact on hospital capacity, but bearing in mind that it also can represent a relatively small number of new hospitalizations because COVID hospitalizations can be relatively long-term if someone, you know, gets really sick with COVID or something like that. But we haven't been seeing those going down in Grand Forks yet. Comparing that to the rest of the state, you know, we are on a slight upward trend, but we are much lower than our peer communities. Both the Minot area and the Bismarck area saw a decrease and then they've subsequently seen an increase in their overall active hospitalizations. This may be because of better data availability or something like that, or because they're seeing, they're seeing, you know, the initial spike related to the initial cases in the community. Now they're seeing kind of that inflammatory response taking, you know, taking hold and causing people to get, end up getting either readmitted into the hospital or getting admitted later on in their COVID course. Moving on to vaccine, touching very briefly on that. Again, we still have a lot of work to do in the 10 to 29 age group. We've been engaging with UND on how they can work to get people better vaccinated. So they have put together a vaccine incentive program and they're doing some outreach specifically on campus where their student health program does, you know, does provide services to their students. But we still do have some progress we need to make to reach that, you know, 60% is our initial goal. When we look, you know, when we look in that 30 to 60 age group, that is another area where we do have, you know, another 6,000 people that we could potentially reach. And then that 12 to 18 age group, another 2,500. And so we are holding a vaccine event at the Alaris Center on, on Wednesday where we will be giving out $50 incentives through an e-gift card for individuals who want to get that first dose and then subsequently get their second dose later. So there are opportunities for people to get engaged in, in vaccination and get some rewards for that. Another thing I want to touch on is we are, or the University of North Dakota hockey team is a good traveling hockey team. And so with the upcoming Hall of Fame game in Nashville, we will have another opportunity for getting people engaged in vaccination because of the vaccination, your requirement or the testing requirement that they're going to have for the Hall of Fame game as well. So, you know, our bottom line, the strengths, we have been seeing a decrease in our cases. This is a very good sign for me. I've, I've been kind of holding my breath last week, but finally seeing that decrease is, is positive as well as seeing the decrease in the 10 to 19 age group. Again, I want to reiterate, we have multiple schools in Grand Forks County, you know, that influence this 10 to 19 age group. So we can't point fingers in any particular direction on why that is occurring. Weaknesses, hospitalizations have been relatively steady to slightly increasing, so there's not a lot, but they are, they aren't necessarily going down, you know, like we would like to see. And then the slowdown in vaccination. And then hopping, since I already talked about our vaccine event, hopping down to the threats. We are still seeing a lot of cases occurring in the Bismarck area. They're still on an upward trend and they're on a lot higher of an upward trend than we were ever at. They're close to 100 cases per 100,000 in their community. And then we're also seeing those sustained increases in hospitalizations in the Bismarck and Minot area. Hopefully we don't see that here where we do have a little bit better vaccination rate, particularly in the older age groups. With that, I am open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duetts. Questions? Mr. Weber, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you go back a slide? I'm going to go back a little bit. 100 out of 100,000, that's among the, some of the worst rates in the country right now, isn't it?
Councilmember Weber, that is high. I, I guess I can't give you a really good frame of reference compared to the rest of the country, but overall that is a really high number of cases and that is really significant activity. It's parallling roughly to where we were, or where they would have been at in late October of last year. So it is concerning, but they, they have a different situation there with their vaccine status and, you know, case activity and things like that, too.
We, we have some benefit from our relative geographic isolation, but then that, that seems to catch up with us at some point. Could you go back another slide, maybe two, no, there we go, that slide actually. The, there's two, two questions I have on this. 60% coverage was a rate that public health decided before Delta. Delta is so much more contagious. Has there been any consideration of the need to adjust that coverage rate for, for the herd immunity idea?
Councilmember Weber, there has been some discussion of, of adjusting that. You, it has really, you know, the decision is kind of falling back to providing, you know, a specific attainable goal, you know, not making it seem like we're, you know, moving goalposts or anything like that. You know, we have seen, you know, with, with any type of increase in vaccination, we see decreases overall in, in case activity. So it does give us some, some hope as well as, you know, another consideration is, we don't necessarily know what our vaccine status is really well in that 19 to 29 age group because we have the, the confounder of college students in the community and they make up such a large part of the population, the community. So, you know, factoring that all in together, plus the potential of pediatric vaccines by the end of October, we're relatively comfortable staying at that 60% for now, but it is something that we are keeping an eye on.
Very good. Thanks. And my last question, going to that 19 to 29-year-old age group, the largest age group in our community. Also, they're the largest group in terms of number totally vaccinated with over 7,000. However, to reach that 60%, we need a little over 6,000 more people vaccinated and there's, there's room in that category right there, the 19 to 29. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, across the river, university students are obligated to get the vaccine. Is there any discussion in our state about the North Dakota university system moving in that direction?
Councilmember Weber, I'm not aware of any discussions going on that would happen at the Board of Higher Education. That wouldn't necessarily be a local decision.
Very good. Thank you, Neil.
President Sandy.
Mr. Duetts, how many people approximately in the city of Grand Forks have already had COVID?
Councilmember Sandy, when you go back to the first slide, it's about 11,000.
About 11,000. And approximately, how many of those people haven't been vaccinated? Probably approximately the same percentages haven't been vaccinated across the county, right?
Councilmember Sandy, roughly.
Actually, more likely than not, more than that haven't been vaccinated, but I will say approximately the same. Purely speculating, one would say that we're probably at, when you include the people that have had COVID, we're probably somewhere at that 60% right now that have some form of protection. But that 60% rule is purely arbitrary, isn't it?
Councilmember, sorry, Sandy, that, that 60% number was based off of an early study looking at what the herd immunity threshold was.
I mean, when we get to 60%, we're not going to have a party, we're not going to tell everybody that they should all go out and hug their neighbors. I think ultimately 60% was a great goal to start with. I'm, I'm a big believer that everyone should get out and get vaccinated. I'd love to see our community at 100% and so that we can put the whole vaccination to, concept to bed. What I'd like to see though is to see us get to that 60% on your chart because the children in our community are wearing masks in schools and the school district has said they're, of the three criteria that they're looking at, that is one of them. Until we get to 60%, my twins continue to have to wear a mask in their school even though they're vaccinated. And in my opinion, the people of the community, if you don't want to do it for yourself, do it for, you know, as the school board always says, do it for the kids. Everybody should get out and do it for the kids. Thank you, Mr. Duetts. I really appreciate all the good information and everything you're doing for our community.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Duetts? All right. Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. All right. No public hearings and secret meetings or ordinances today, so move on to four action items. Is there any items? I don't think we had any administratively we wanted to pull. Was there any items that council wanted to pull? Mr. Sandy?
4.1.
4.1?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Veen, oh, sorry, I was just going to have my mind. Mr. Veen and Mr. Cavani, anything you wanted to pull tonight?
Nope. No. Yes.
Ms. Mock?
I'd like to pull 4.7 and then ask to be recused from 4.6.
Okay. We had a motion to recuse Ms. Mock. We got a motion from Mr. Weber and a second from?
Mayor Bocinski, I, I believe you mean 4.6.
Or did I say 4.7? Sorry.
Yeah.
We got a motion to recuse Ms. Mock from 4.6 from Mr. Weber and a second from Mr. Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. You are recused from 4.6. So with that, I'm going to look for a motion on 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6. Well, can we do 4.6 with her out then on just that one? Let's sell off on that one. We'll, so we'll do 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.8 and 4.9 with the whole body first. Can I get a motion to approve those items? Got a motion from Mr. Sandy and a second from Ms. Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those motions carry. Let's, let's do 4.6 then. Can I get a motion? We got a motion from Sandy for approval. We have a second. Second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries unanimously with Ms. Mock. Recused. On to 4.1. Ms. Stor said, was anything indirect that you wanted?
Yeah, no.
She can read it in and then we'll.
Certainly.
4.1 is a resolution authorizing the issuance, call for bids and set sale date for the refunding improvement bonds, Series 2021A, refunding improvement refunding bonds, 2021B, and the refunding sewer reserve revenue refunding bonds, 2021C.
I'm certainly going to make the motion to approve and actually I will make that motion. However, moving forward, in my personal opinion, I think anytime we refinance a bond that is being paid for with special assessments, the city should not keep the difference in what we save. We should be passing that on to the people that are paying those special assessments. I would like to see us figure out how we can do that because there's, again, in my opinion, we know who we're special assessing for those projects and we know how much money we're saving. And so crediting those people that are paying those special assessments, in my opinion, is the fair way to, to do things.
Yeah. Well, Ms. Stor said, I'd go real quick. I, I think it's definitely worth, worth the conversation. I think in the past we've looked at the balance of the south end development and generally the specials are, tend to be in newer parts and maybe their cost is higher than other parts. We can have that debate as well, but I think some of it is seen as a way of balancing it out because that funds can go back throughout the whole city. the specials tend to be in newer parts, and maybe their cost is higher than other parts. We can have that debate as well, but I think some of it is seen as a way of balancing it out, because that funds can go back throughout the whole city, but maybe you have something more to add, Ms. Stor.
And Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy, members of council, so, and, and the, the theory behind it in the past has been everybody says, pays the same for the same benefit that received. So everybody is assessed the same amount. If there is an opportunity for savings, we do take that, it goes to the loan and stabilization used for property tax stabilization. For instance, your 2022 budget included a transfer from loan and stabilization for 198,000 roughly dollars to, to reduce those mills. So that's how the mechanism has happened in the past, where we can, like Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy said, we can have more discussions on that.
I think that the city of Grand Forks, and I, I don't think we're unique in this. I think other cities do it, too. We reap the benefits when the, when the bond rates fall. So when, in today's, in today, we're special assessing, and some of the new assessments on the south end of town are getting special assessments on bonds that we're selling at 2%, whereas the folks years ago did not. I'm not, I, again, in my opinion, I think we should, whenever we're, whenever we're refinancing bonds that people are paying for in their property tax bill, I think we should be looking for ways to reduce that for them. But that, again, it's just my opinion, and so I'm interested in having further discussion on that, and if, if I'm the only one that says so, so be it. That's okay. Otherwise, as I said, I'll move approval.
Got a motion in a second. I would say it's definitely something, you know, worth looking at, and it really only benefits when you have falling rates. I can't imagine rates are going to go much lower. It's probably going to be the opposite, and people are going to be, you know, plum happy that they got it at these rates, but.
In, in this particular instance, with the one we're refinancing, I believe the final maturity now will be paid in 2027. The funds stay in the bond until then, and that's the opportunity where it's, it's roughly a $327,000 net present value savings from this bond refinancing.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion, second, any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 4.1 carries unanimously.
4.7 sign appeal for Grand Forks Marketplace located at 3601 32nd Avenue South to allow for a 30-foot High Commercial Center ground monument sign.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, was there, you want to give us a little update, or did you want to say something first, Ms. Mock?
No need to. I just watched the planning and zoning meeting, and I imagine it'll pass. I don't think it's a big deal. I just thought there were some valid points raised, and I would have liked to have seen it gone to the sign committee before, because I think we're going to see more exemption requests, and it seems like we see those a lot, and it would be nice to have kind of a policy, so. But with that, I'm ready to vote.
All right. Any further comments? I did get to take a look at the sign. I think it's, and generally, our sign policy in general, generally, in general, we need to probably take a look at and do some work on, but looking at this sign, it's pretty standard, what you see in just about any community, especially along, near the interstate on a major throughway where it's, it's nearly all commercial, but certainly a good point, Ms. Mock. Do we have a motion on the item? We got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigel. We have a second.
I'll move second.
All right. We have a, we do have a second, so it was interesting to see how the vote is, but we had a second at least. Any further comment? Mr. Phelan?
Just a thought, you know, I've been in communications with, call it the developer of this, this mall, and I think to some degree, we're probably behind the curve on things, and so I think the, the positive thing you should all know is that I've talked to this gentleman for a few years, and there's been pretty depressing conversations before COVID, during COVID, but the last time I spoke to the gentleman, he was quite optimistic about the retailers, the national retailers that did survive are, are looking at Grand Forks and looking at the Grand Forks Marketplace. So I think that's the real positive, that you should know that he's optimistic, that there is interest in our community, and I think would, this came forward because that, this is what the national retailers are asking for in order for them to come into our marketplace as we move forward. So I just want to say, it's really come, this is, this request is coming from a positive, that there are retailers that are, that have survived that are looking to invest in Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any further comments? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to one with Mock dissenting. Motion carries. Moving on to five information items.
5.1 is the events of portfolio summary as of August 31st.
Thank you. And six citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments tonight? All right. That period is closed. Move to seven. Approval of minutes and bills?
7.1 vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
Have a motion to approve the vendor list and engineer's estimate. Motion for Ms. Mock. We have a second. Second from Mr. Weigel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 7.1 carries unanimously.
And 7.2 is the minutes from August 2nd.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes carry unanimously. Mr. Phelan, city administrator comments, please.
Mayor Bochensky and members of city council, the mayor highlighted a lot of great things that our city employees did, and so it's, it is quite an honor to work in an organization with a culture where city employees want to help out, and I just want to highlight the challenges we're having workforce development. We're doing, all those examples are, we're doing the very best we can to fill all the gaps, so this community is successful in all the events that are going on right now, and that's taking all of our city employees, whether they're in public transit, public works, fire, throughout the whole city organization, and whether it's an event at the Alaris Center or whether it's us supporting the school district. And certainly, we can't do this forever of what we're doing, but in the meantime, we are trying to fill all these different niches, and so I'm really grateful for all the city employees that have stepped up in, in a variety of different ways. And I'll just give you two examples, and so when you're the city administrator, what you want to do is, you know, make one phone call and someone gets it done. So Gary Lorenz, we, we gave a call on Thursday to help support the Alaris event with the testing, and he got a crew together for the next morning at 4:30, so within, within minutes. Another call on Thursday was to Blake Beckstead, and that was to help support Todd Hanson mosquito control, so that we could do a citywide spraying that evening. So this is in a matter of hours. We were able to get aid equipment operators together in a few hours to help support that event, otherwise, we would not have sprayed the entire city. So those are just two great examples of people stepping up, making things happen, that are all behind the scenes, and they do it because of, of the passion for the city of Grand Forks and this, in this terrific community. And I just want to say, I've worked with Blake Beckstead. I really love Blake Beckstead, and this community and this city is going to miss all the things that he's done through storms, through floods, through all the actions where you can call one person named Blake and it gets done, and we should never take that for granted. And he's, he's a little, he was a little emotional today about leaving the city of Grand Forks, because his heart's in it, but he's called his, his predecessors who have retired, and he said, they seem to have survived and survived quite well, so he's thinking he's going to be in that category. But really, hats off to guys like Blake Beckstead, who you can call any time of the day, and they get, make things happen, and the final honor is when Blake was able to get eight folks together to help with the citywide spray and a mosquito control, not in their department, but they just got that done. And so let's never take that for granted, and let's never let that go in our community. We also working with Mayor Bochensky, where we are planning to put a, speaking of public works, Public Works operates, we are planning to put that in front of the, community as a whole next week, Monday. We have made a final determinations, but we're, we're planning to target next week, Monday, to have that in front of you. We're also trying to target a downtown, we've got all these great downtown projects that are opening up this fall, and some projects that may be, whether speaking by Epic, where they would like to do a groundbreaking. So we're trying to target a date in October, where we can even bring Governor Bergman, we know, well know that he's all into Main Street, and he's really proud of Grand Forks. So we're trying to organize something that we can have a celebration, try to put that together in October. Some more to come, lots of pieces, but we'll, we'll do our best to get that handled in October, along with all the DOT projects that we have done, so we'd also like to have the DOT director come to town and thank him for all the partnerships in our downtown area. The other project that we're working on, and you haven't heard from it for a little while, is the south end development, and we have, like, for example, we have a pump station in the 22 budget, a wastewater pump station, and Curious Development was here to discuss their south end development. We're going to try to bring that back in October, have some more discussions about, you know, how and if we're going to move forward in the south end, so that we can get moving through the winter into next spring. So we'll bring that project back to you and have some further conversations, and we're targeting that in October also. The, the final thought I have is, I know Commissioner Ross is here on the law enforcement memorial. I recall that we, I think as a city, prior gave 25,000, if I recall correctly, I think they received a similar fund from the Park District. My guess is that even if they rebid the project, they're not going to realize all the savings of 150,000. So really, the thought, the, if you're okay with us working, and, and he hasn't asked for this, but there isn't going to be a gap. I suspect they're going to be able to do some fundraising, but if you allow us, similar to what we did with, whether it's Fetts' Memorial Park or, or the Hugo's Raceway, BMX Raceway, to help work with Commissioner Ross, so if there is a gap, then maybe we can work with him. I think he didn't want to ask that, but I suspect even if they bid this winter, there's still going to be a funding gap, and if you guys are open-minded enough, I'll work with, with him to see what that gap is and have him come back to. If you, if there's a general will to do that, otherwise, I'll, I'll leave it alone, but I think that's what they're looking for. They'll do the best they can, but there might be a gap.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan, and thanks for your help, a lot of cross-departmental work, and you stepped up as well to help that happen, so thank you. On to nine men and council member comments. Mr. Weigel?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms., is Ms. Dockland on? No. Mr. Weber?
Workforce development is going to be an incredibly important part of our city's future health, so we need to be thinking about that. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Kavami?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Veen?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Council Vice President Mock?
Congratulations to the skate park on the second, second opening, the second phase of their opening. It's been busy ever since the cement ride, so.
Another good amenity for the town, absolutely. And President Sandy, any comments tonight?
Mr. Mayor, when, when the city staff chip in and work out at the Alaris and off hours, do, do we give them comp time? Do we give them extra hours off during their regular shift?
Well, they get, they get paid, they'll get paid overtime for those, and then if they show up at both events, these two concerts that are coming up, they're going to get an extra gift basket from the Alaris Center.
Yeah, right. I, I, I don't think we can say it enough times, how important it is to have people willing to raise their hand and say, you know, put me in coach, so I really appreciate that. I, I did want to say one last thing is, when I was taking off to come here from my office, I had to stop because the city bus stopped in a very peculiar spot, and a whole bunch of rugrats walked off and headed off to their homes. I was pretty impressed, so standing and sitting behind a, a Grand Forks city bus and watching the young kids walk, walk to their houses. So hats off again to you, yourself, Mayor, as well as Mr. Bergman and, and our bus system, picking up the slack and helping out. It's a great effort, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Probably a good idea to remind people that there's kids getting off those, so let's be even extra careful as we, we see city buses and school buses around town. Lastly, for me, I'm just really grateful, Grand Forks really came to, to life this last weekend in a positive way. It all ended up, ended with the community picnic that was last night at University Park that I was able to attend. There was roughly about 500 people there, and we all got to play games, dance a little, not, not me, but some other people were dancing, and, and get to know each other better. So it was just a great cap off to the weekend, got to bring my daughter there, and we just had a great night, so I'm just really grateful for the community to, to come to life. So I think with that, we'll, we'll end. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion from Mr. Weigel, a second from Mr. Sandy, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I can't imagine. We're adjourned.